Going to the general fund or all the other funds for all the taxing districts, it goes into a fund that can be used to pay for improvements related directly to that property or that project. So the way that's done sometimes, sometimes it's vacant land and a TIF is created and that can, debt can be raised through the issuance of bonds to pay for improvements upfront and then the future tax increment revenues can be used to service the debt. Sometimes it's more of a pay as you go situation where it just keeps accumulating and it's paying for things as you go along. So this particular project, we had a TIF district in the northern area shown on the map here. And by the way, just for sake of reference, that square, that rectangle, that red rectangle, that's Price Chopper and Orshlands is just to the south of it. So what happened was Orshlands went in and redeveloped the Walmart building. And when they did that, I'm not sure when that happened exactly. I'm new to Ottawa, so I'm still trying to get an understanding of the history. But then there was a dentist office that was developed, built there, just on that same property or on the property just south of Orshlands. And around that time, the city created the southern area TIF district. So one thing that's really missing from that southern area are sidewalks along the streets. And if you drive along there or you try to walk along there, I wouldn't recommend trying to walk along there. There's a very narrow shoulder. It drops off, it slopes quickly into a ditch. I was down there today and observed it firsthand. So what can be done is as we build up this fund in this taxing from a finance district, we can use those funds to pay for infrastructure. And so that's a real, that's really needed, that sidewalk. It wasn't built way back when because there was a period of history where generally we stopped worrying about sidewalks. We paid more attention to streets and car travel and we kind of tended to neglect sidewalks. So a lot of those things didn't happen. So now when we go back and try to redevelop sites, we want to get those sidewalks in, but it's really difficult to put that on the back of a project of a developer who's going in and developing a building. It's an existing building. So it makes sense, there's a reason to do it using a TIF district and TIF funds. So last year, there was this idea to use, to do this sidewalk project that would provide these sidewalks along the west side of Orshlands site and east side of Orshlands site and connect to the sidewalks on the Price Chopper site. And we did, we had a cost estimate done by our city engineer and it's a, what it's called is an estimate of probable costs or an opinion of probable costs. So he does, takes his best shot. He hasn't designed it. He hasn't put together design plans that would generate costs or lead to a bid award. It's really a preliminary estimate. So his estimate was about $276,000. And we checked the fund and at the end of 2022, or excuse me, at the end of, beginning of 2022, it would have like 235,000. So it's short by that much, by a little over 40,000. So it's not to a point where it can be done yet. It's something that can be considered in the next couple of years. So will, that fund will grow. We don't know what that's going to be yet, but there'll be an increase in value and there'll be funds collected. And possibly that dentist office would have added some value that will generate additional tax revenue. So that's the status of this project. The reason this is on the agenda is because Vice Chair Winika asked me about it and wanted something about this on the agenda. I'm not sure this is exactly what you wanted to talk about.
Well, I just need just an update.
Yeah.
You know, kind of where we are. And I do have a question. Okay, if I walk over there and point to my question?
And I realize this is private property. So in this parking lot here, this is private property right here.
Yes.
Right? And my kind of thing that burns me as a citizen is the water drainage right here.
Yes.
We always have an issue. And this is where we'll have farmer's market sometimes. And if it has rained, sometimes you're driving into foot to a foot and a half of water that just stays there for a while. But it's private property, you know? So what is it that we can do, you know? Is there any recourse for the city or anybody to encourage the owners of that private property to do something when, you know, during this time that we're working on the TIF project?
It's a good question. You know, there are certain projects or certain improvements that are eligible for TIF funding and certain improvements that are not. I don't know if that's eligible for the TIF funds. Could be. Don't know the law here well enough. Previous state I worked in, it would not have been eligible, but that was a very, that's a different situation, different state laws. Things change from state to state. Other than that, that's something I'll look into. I don't know if we can ask them to do something. I'm sure they recognize it. I was down there today and was going to turn there and didn't because it looked like there was about a foot of water in there.
Probably not a foot, but there was.
Could solve some real big issues.
Yeah. If you remember about two, three years ago, the same issue used to happen on this side, but you know that they kind of redid that and now the water just flows and you don't have the same issue on this side. I just, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, but if we're, those sidewalks that are on this image, are those sidewalks all there now or is this drawn in?
That's drawn in. So the ones that are there are the ones, if you can see where the Price Chopper frontage is.
Okay, the newer sidewalk.
That is in.
Okay.
Anything that's not along the Price Chopper frontage is not in.
It's drawn in so well that I'm going.
I know.
Have I just missed the sidewalks out there? So here's my question though. If you're installing sidewalks, isn't part of that process ensuring that there's some drainage so that people don't have to swim down the sidewalk?
Because a section of that sidewalk.
I mean, if you're putting in the sidewalk anyway, across some of these places that are flooding very badly, isn't there kind of an obligation to make it safe when it's pouring rain?
Well, I think what you're getting at is when the sidewalk, the sidewalk's eligible, so why wouldn't the drainage associated with the sidewalk be eligible? And you can see where that sidewalk, and this is a concept.
Yeah.
So that in this concept, the drainage ditch is between the sidewalk and the street. So that sidewalk must be on private property. So what that means is I believe the city would have to get an easement for the sidewalk.
Okay.
I'm not positive it's on private property. I'm assuming it is. And yeah, maybe that could be fixed as part of the sidewalk project. And maybe we don't want to wait that long too. That's the other thing. But it's pretty bad. I've noticed it on at least a couple of occasions.
And will this?
This is Ms.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, this is Ms. Elmer and I apologize. Diana, I can't hear you very well. I don't know if it's the mic is too far away, but I'm hearing about the hydrology that's in that entrance, entrance exit area on the Orshlands parking lot and that the sidewalk may be on private property. That was my question for the city was where is the right of way in this area? If, does that fall within the right of way? And is it a city's responsibility or is that something that, again, is what was already being asked, is it something that we'd be able to partner with the businesses that are located in that parking lot?
And given, given the history of that loop and all that through there, I think if you dug deep enough, you could probably find, I agree, I think that's probably within the right of ways. But I bet the state also has some liability there because that used to be Highway 59 going north and south, our main thoroughfare. And I bet that's still on the state records for their right of ways.
Yeah, there's a slide on here that shows the right of way lines, but it's so small I can't read it. I'm going to walk up to it and see if that'll help.
You can also still see that little remnant of US 50 there too, on that second.
Right here.
Yeah.
So actually the right of way is really wide there. So that sidewalk that's shown on that concept drawing, just looking at this, it looks like that is in the right of way.
Ooh.
Not all of the drainage problem is in the right of way, but, but yeah.
So this sidewalk though, it's really looking at just that southern area. It's not covering the other really dangerous spot, which is from 19th to 17th where people are almost tightrope blocking that tiny little shoulder. But that's not part of the TIF district, correct? So it wouldn't be.
And heavily traveled.
Yeah. A lot of people who are walking that little path trying to get to work on the south side. So basically north of 19th, that's not part of the TIF, so it would not qualify, correct?
Is this 19th here?
Yes. So that little, yeah, that little.
That is not in the TIF. So that's, yeah, that's a problem too. Yep.
But having said it's a problem, the rail trail is walkable.
Mm-hmm.
And the rail trail, when this project is done, will connect with this sidewalk. There's already a connection there across Princeton Circle from the rail trail to Price Chopper. So once this is all done.
Up here?
A person will be walking along there because they choose to walk along there, not because that's the only way to get there once this project is done.
It is, it is a pretty hefty walk on foot though, to get from the east side all the way over to the rail trail.
It's less than a block.
So.
It's less than a block. From, at 17th Street, it's less than a block. But there is, there is a way to do it safely.
So there's, the rail trail's here, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So if someone wants to get from this point, well, from here to here, or from here to here, you're making the argument, Cal, that this, they can take this as an option of walking along here. I think that's what you're saying.
Right, because unless I'm mistaken, there is a handicapped accessible sidewalk that runs from the west side to the rail trail right there, south of the current park.
Okay.
Right in there.
Okay.
And I don't see an exact location. This is, looks like an older.
This is so, this is so small, it's hard to read it.
Right.
But.
Because I see people crossing there from the trail all the time.
You know, I'm really glad that Vice Chair Winika asked for this information because it really forced me to go back and look at it and take an interest in it. I think it's important to have direct pedestrian connections when you can. They can be, you know, there, a lot of times they're just part of the cost of new development, but when areas are redeveloped, it's just challenging because you're trying to come back and do it. And, and you know, the other option is the city, it just becomes a city project, just goes on the capital improvement plan, which by the way, that will be getting in front of you within the next two months, I believe. And it'll have a list of projects and you know, sidewalk projects are a potential project, type of project that can be on that list. Of course, it's competing with a lot of other priorities, but, but yeah. So yeah, good discussion.
I would think though, if it's on the capital improvement project, unless, my recollection of the TIF money is there's no other, no other entity or no other fund has to share in the cost of that. That can all, it's self-funded from the TIF project.
Yeah, what I was referring to, Mr. Chairman, is the areas that aren't in the TIF.
Okay, the area, okay, okay. My mistake. I misunderstood what you said. Anything else on the 19th Street TIF district? Any questions for Director Hall? Commissioner Elmer, I can't see you, but do you have anything?
At this moment, I do not.
Okay. And we'll move on to new business, the final plat for Premier Plaza.
All right. Okay, so on the agenda is a consideration of the final plat for Premier Plaza. The project also has another name Victory Ottawa. This is a replat of track two from a lot split of Lot 45, County Clerk subdivision number one, located at Highway East 23rd. So just a few important data points here. You approved the preliminary plat for this in September 2021. Keep in mind, a preliminary plat is not really a regulating document. It doesn't get recorded. It doesn't go to the city commission for approval. It's really a plan. That's the way I look at a preliminary plat. It's important because you have to look at all of that information that's on a preliminary plat, but the final plat is the regulating document and the plan that gets recorded. The final plat has to be approved before the developer, the builder can take out building Typically, the infrastructure is all completed before the final plat is approved and recorded. That's how it works here anyway. This area is Zone C3, so it's zoned for this use, which is a auto dealership. There are two lots proposed and something that is kind of technical, but kind of an important thing is some of the site work is going to be in the, what is currently mapped as the 100-year floodplain, and I'll show you that in a minute. So what they're doing is they are doing what's called a conditional letter of map revision for fill, so they can locate the site or improve the site in the floodplain. What that process does is it ensures that there's no rise that's going to affect other properties essentially. So there's this pretty technical exercise that's taking place. And by the way, I didn't mention it, but the civil engineer, Patrick Cassidy, is participating by Zoom and he can probably answer questions that are specific about that. But that's happening right now. The other thing that's happening are, there've been, well, I'll go to the next slide and I'll explain that a little bit better. This is just a map showing you the floodplain. The area that's kind of orange colored, rust colored, that's the 500-year floodplain. The blue area is the 100-year floodplain or the 1% floodplain. And then the crosshatched area is the floodway. The 500-year floodplain does not really have any regulatory implications at all. It's just, there's a, it's a 500-year flood percent. There's 500-year flood chance happening in that area. So here's the preliminary plat. The dealership project is in two phases. The building on the left side, on the west side, on one of the lots, that's the first phase. And then the building on the east side is the second phase. And I don't know if you're going to be able to see it on here. I can probably point it out, but the floodplain crosses right about here. And there's also a, there's also a natural gas easement, natural gas line easement here. So one thing that is being done is the developer is required to extend sanitary sewer, I believe, up to here and then also water. And I don't remember all the details of that. Patrick, I'm sure does. And the other thing that's happening is the road is being reconstructed and widened. There's a, there's a turn lane right here and curb gutter and sidewalk are all part of the project as well. So there's the final plat. The final plat does not have buildings on it or anything like that. Final plat's not a site plan. It's, it shows the lots and the easements, the constraints. There might be notes on a final plat about infrastructure, establishing some expectations. When someone buys a piece of property, let's say, let's say the project never gets built. It's going to get built. It's in the process of getting built. But let's say something doesn't get built. 20 years from now, this plat will be at the Register of D's office and someone can look it up and say, okay, these are the conditions of the property. Some conditions can change, but certain things aren't going to change. And that's, that's the value of the plat. And it just, it also provides a survey of the property lines and keeps a record of the So the recommendation is to approve this. You're not taking action on this today. This is a study session item. It's a good, good opportunity to ask, ask questions. If there's more information you need, there's a good, this is a good opportunity to ask for that, that additional information. In the staff report, there are several conditions. And some of these are pretty minor. I would, rather than me read them off, if you want to see these, these are on page seven of the packet. Trying to think if there's anything real significant here. So one thing that gets reflected on a plat when there's a floodplain is there'll be a drainage easement and it just means you can't build in that drainage easement. Certain things you cannot do in a drainage easement. So that's something that's going to be added to the plat. But that's, that, those are my comments, my remarks. I'd say if you have any questions, you can ask me or you can let the civil engineer answer those and then he's on the line and he might want to present his, he might want to make a brief presentation or just give you some background. Thank you.
We fleshed this out a lot.
Several times.
Yeah.
Went through the preliminary plat. Does there anybody have any questions on this?
Well, I think the biggest question that came out of all of this is just to ensure that whatever does happen on this property doesn't end up moving the flooding to other places that are not currently. But that's really not what's on the, where that, the FEMA approvals and things, that is not actually part of approving the plat, correct? That we're just approving those boundaries and lines and then the drainage easement, but that is all that's being asked of us at this point, not how they're building up the property, not what buildings are going on the property. We'll just be asked to approve the plat.
So that is, that is mostly correct, I would say. The question of the floodplain and the work that they're doing and whether that's going to affect other properties, that has to be determined as part of the plat. It's not something you have to figure out. It's really a technical exercise that the civil engineer is doing and they have to satisfy FEMA. That I'm pretty sure is not very easy to do.
FEMA Department of Natural Resources, there's going to be a lot of steps that they have to go through and that's all done through the engineering phase of this. So yeah, I would think that we're, we're looking at the preliminary plat today and I think we're good.
Yeah. Well, just to be clear, this is the final plat.
Final plat.
But, but yeah, all that is being done. And our city engineer is providing oversight as well. The other thing that's happening is, is our city engineer is reviewing the public infrastructure plans, the water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, street, street and sidewalk, curb and gutter plans.
And when you say our staff, I think you're referring to BG consultants who, who the city uses as the engineered record.
That's correct.
Infrastructure projects and they're pretty thorough.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure we don't approve something that will flood someone's house that wasn't flooding before.
Yeah.
Just because you don't have less water, it's just going somewhere else.
It's pushing it somewhere else. You're right.
Right.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. I think it might be a good time for me to jump in just real quickly. So my name is Patrick Cassidy. I'm with Renaissance. We're doing the civil engineering for all this. And I heard a question come up about floodwater and flooding and I just wanted you guys to know that we have modeled that whole area, pre-development, post-development, 100-year water surface elevations, and we have actually modeled a no-rise condition. It has been reviewed by the city engineer. I believe it's been approved and it's in the process of being reviewed at FEMA right now. So that's kind of where we're at with all that. So we're not, we're not worsening any existing conditions there.
Hmm, okay. Good. Thank you. Any other questions for the engineer or for Director Hall? Okay, if not, I guess we'll see it on the agenda for our next regular meeting and I'm sure the engineer will be here and no Director Hall will be here, so we'll get it on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Item number two, election of officers. Now, is this something that we do today or is this something we just decide what we're going to do and then do it at the regular meeting?
I think what you could do is discuss it and if anybody has any nominations, you could bring it up at the next meeting, maybe when you give other people an opportunity to, to participate. I think you could make a decision today. I wouldn't suggest you do that. I'd suggest you just.
Aren't we supposed to finalize that decision at a public hearing?
That's what, yeah, a public meeting.
Right, a public meeting, yeah.
I don't think it technically requires a public hearing, but.
No, I mean, at a public meeting?
But at the regular meeting.
Yeah, at the regular meeting.
Reorgan, I think it's better to, just because it is a scheduled meeting, but quote our, I got to quote our city attorney, a meeting is a meeting is a meeting. So we can do it anytime, something like that that's not statutory, we can, reorganization's not statutory, but I think we should do it at a regular meeting. So we'll need to have a chair and a vice chair.
And Mr. Chairman, we did attach the bylaws, I believe.
Okay.
So if you want to review that.
That's on page, starts from.
I think they started around 16, page 17.
17, yes, sir. So I think y'all should decide, do you want, would you like to be chair or vice chair? And would you be able to attend most of the meetings if you are? That's the question. So.
Anybody else interested in being chair before I put my nomination in that, and I'll be, I'll be upfront with you, I suggest Carl serve another term as chair.
No.
Is, are there term limits on how long you can serve?
This is, he wasn't chair last time, so I can tell you that right now. So if there are term limits, they don't apply right now.
Well, I'm flattered that if somebody else wants to, wants to sit in the middle seat, I'll be happy to let them.
Member Elmer?
At this moment, I have no desire to sit in the middle chair. I think that Cal, that Cal fills it well. So I would support that. One of the things that I, I mean, as vice chair, I don't have a desire for that at the moment right now. It just doesn't fit into my schedule, but if something were to come up, I would hate to not be in a meeting where it would be important for me to be there. So either, I'm here for wonderful, great support behind the scenes and in person whenever I have the opportunity. But in those two positions, I think that as the public is number one priority, I think I'll step back on those, but definitely continue where I am right now.
Well done. Well played, Member Elmer. Well played.
Thank you, sir.
She starts by making a comment on Carl's nomination and before she's finished, she's eliminated herself from all the positions. Well played.
Well, and it says.
Isn't that amazing?
The commissioner can serve three full consecutive one-year terms as chairperson. So I don't, I mean, you've got two solid years.
I think he's a shoe-in.
He's a, you know.
This, this exact same thing happened to me years ago.
Oh, good. So you're used to it. Okay, good. Okay, all right, okay.
So I do have, I do have a question about terms. And we're here at a three-year, three-year term. And I believe that in the, in the bylaws, it says that the city staff would keep track of terms. of terms and things like that. I believe I have completed the first year of my three-year term. Do we know the status of all the other members on the commission?
Hmm. We do. I just didn't bring it with me. I apologize.
Would you please bring that maybe to our regular meeting?
Absolutely.
Our next, our next, whatever our next scheduled meeting is, would you either bring that, or you could email it to us. How many years are left in our term, and are we eligible for another?
I will email that to you.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Elmer. I was going to ask about that today.
Well played, Commissioner Elmer. I mean, she is, my goodness.
I am trying from a distance. I am trying from a distance.
She probably has a script in front of her. We can't see. She's probably made notes on it.
I have no script. I promise you. It's, it's me trying to look at someone's eyes through the computer.
Commissioner Maynes?
I'm good. I, I'm accepting exactly what Commissioner Elmer is saying. So I'm not a candidate as well. I, I think, I, I think those two positions, as she has stated, is more of a eye of the public, and I, I'll respectfully step aside for that position.
You let us have the stuff that matters, right?
You, you like sitting on the side over there.
Absolutely. Sit on the side, and, and as she has stated, I'm, I'm here to, to offer support to, to everybody in our, in our community, and I'll do my part.
And on the other hand, Members Terrence and Dean is, is, is sees it differently.
I, I will tell you, if you absolutely needed me to serve as vice chair, I would consider that. I would like to have an extra year to keep learning what Planning Commission does and all of its roles, because I'm still pretty new to this. But if you desperately needed me to fill that role, I would. But I know you don't, because I know you're very excited about sitting in that chair for another year.
Well played.
Congratulations.
To further support that, I, I don't think we could have a better candidate for it. He is absolutely in the public eye. At the Ottawa University, being in Ottawa University, he's very in tune with what's going on in our community. He knows where the sidewalks need to be.
Why did we talk about this today again?
So I, I think we have our candidates.
Now, I understand this is going live, and I understand that, you know, there probably is going to be a recordist, but I don't have any socks, so it's deep enough right now.
I'm going to tell him to come. Don't worry. We need to move along. Got to tell him to come.
So I think we have our nominees.
Let's leave it at this. I, I don't mind serving as chair for another year, especially if, if Dr. Wanika would serve as a, a vice chair, or Members Terrence and Dean would serve as vice chair, either one. But let's look at the, let's look at the eligibility and see who would then, for continuation for the next year. Let's see, let's see how.
Yeah, just in case my term is up in three weeks from now.
Try to keep.
It's possible.
Do we have anyone go, do people go on offer?
And that's where I was getting at, is that I know that for me, I'm busy with all of my outside of the commission work, and I, I've been trying to keep a mental track of where I am. But I didn't know where everybody else was in that process, if, if we were tracking that. One of the other things was, is I know that last time I had made a question, and I know that we can probably discuss it next time, but it's about the requirements, the attendance. And that's something that I think we should look at as an open discussion amongst ourselves as to what requirements are there and if it needs to be reviewed.
Yes. I, I think everybody agrees with you on that one. I think everybody agrees with you on that one, because we, you're not the only one that's asked Director Hall to look into that. So I think that's, I think we do need to have a discussion and, and look at the bylaws and make sure that everybody's in conformance with what the bylaws say, and everybody understands their, their obligation when they accept the position of planning commissioner.
Yeah, so there's a, if I could cut in, or if I could mention something.
Well, you can't cut in, but Director Hall, you have the floor.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman. So in the bylaws, there is a section on attendance.
Page 17.
And if you look at, yes, page 17, the second paragraph, any commissioner who is absent for four meetings in a row, including study session meetings, regular meetings, or a total of eight such meetings during a 12-month period, shall have their membership status reviewed by the other commissioners.
Okay.
And I, I think that there is a member that is pushing up against that right now. And so I, my understanding is they haven't crossed that threshold yet. But anyway, that's, that's the, where it speaks to the attendance.
If, if everybody's okay with this, I think I would ask Director Hall to have a conversation with that commissioner, talking about the requirements to be a commissioner, and seeing if they would, if they want to continue and want to improve, or if they want to allow us to put somebody else on that can be here on a regular basis. Is there any?
I second that. I think that's, that's.
Is that okay with everybody?
I think that's a smart first.
I, I third and fourth that one. And I think that performing our civic duty is, is huge to begin with, but then whenever we take at, accepting a position that's voluntary, sometimes life does get in the way. And, but yet, the purpose of you being on the commission is to be able to help the community and to be able to move forward. And you're the voice of the community. And if, if that voice isn't being heard, or decisions can't be made because of not having a quorum, it makes it difficult on the other commissioners as well. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is it for the Planning Commission or for the City Commission to decide to remove someone from a seat?
I think that the commissioners discuss. My understanding is, don't we then recommend to the Planning Commission?
To the City Commission.
To the City Commission, to the City Commission for final action.
But I think before we get that far down the road, I think it would be, I think if Director Hall would have a, a sit-down, hopefully before our next meeting with this individual, and see what their plans are, I think that would be much easier than.
Yeah.
Doing some quasi-judicial thing to remove them. So.
Yeah.
So why don't we?
We'll take that step.
Why don't we take that step, and then you can report back to us at the next meeting, if you would please. Okay?
Hopefully it doesn't come to what, what you just asked about.
Yeah.
But at the end, on the outside, it could be, you know, yeah.
At the end of the day, we need seven commissioners, because life gets in the way for all of us. And we certainly don't want to have somebody that spends tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars on an engineering study, only to come to a meeting and find out there's not a quorum here, because.
Yeah, that's a problem.
So, yeah.
I think Commissioner Kane would, would.
And, and I know that there's ways around being able to attend. Hence, this is why I am doing what I am today, and I've done multiple different times. And I know even on the City Commission, that we've had commissioners who are not necessarily available in town, or they may be out of town on business, but they see the importance and the priority of, of this, this position in itself. So I agree with everybody. I've got another, another question, though. I haven't been following along as closely, just because it's, it's kind of like out of sight, out of mind at the moment. I did step in to the zoning position last year, and I have stepped back. And is that one of those things that we, as the commission, appoint someone as we did last time? Or is that something that goes before the, the City Commission to appoint for, for the board of zoning?
You want me to answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Please, yes.
So all that requires is for someone to say they're willing to do it, one of the commissioners, and for the commission to, to have consensus that that person's going to serve. And that's actually on the agenda today. So we have, we do have a volunteer, someone volunteered to do that. And, and, and so the commission can actually act on that today.
Okay.
And it does not have to go to the City Commission.
So, so it's an annual thing, because I thought we just did it. Member Elmer?
I can kind of.
Well, that is because, well, if you remember, we had a commissioner pass away.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I was, I was going in for the remainder of her term.
Oh, I remember. Yes, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I believe that we just need to make certain that with, with the zoning, that everybody that's on the zoning is, meets the criteria that's, that is for that as well. So.
On the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what I, what I'm hearing here is Member Elmer, you know, is quite okay with continuing and filling her, and fulfilling her own term, in which case I would suggest that.
I think that there's actually, I, I think that there's a conflict of the amount of those who out, because I do not live within the city limits. And, and Mr. Hall, can you confirm this? I do not live within the city limits, but due to the circumstances that happened this last fall, I had time available to step in to fill. I believe that that position ended in April. And if we have any new BZA cases coming forward, I just want to make certain that, though, though I would be, I would be willing to be able to do the BZA, it's just I don't think that I meet their criteria of what the BZA position is available.
Right. I think this, I think this position requires that you're a resident of the city.
City.
And that would, yeah, I would, I immediately thought we'd just reappoint you, but Director Hall has said that that's not possible, because you don't live inside the city limits. So we do have a, to carry on that conversation, because that is the last item on our agenda. We sent out a, we sent out an email to eligible people, and the person who responded to that email and volunteered was Commissioner Crowley. And I know he's, I know he's served on this BZA before, so he understands the rule. And the other thing is, the BZA meets on the call of the chair. So there's not, you can't pencil in the meetings. You just have to be available for, for a meeting. And that, that requires somebody that has flexibility in their schedule as well. So to me, he would be a good candidate for that. He's done it before, unless there's a vol, another volunteer here. If there's not a volunteer here, he's not here, we're going to railroad him into it. If there is another volunteer, now's your opportunity. But you do need to live inside the city limits.
And, and I respectfully decline.
And Commissioner Crowley is very familiar with zoning issues, just by nature of what he does. So I fully support that, if he's willing to do that.
Any other discussion on that?
I, I'm with you there. I support that, even if he's not willing to do.
Well, I suppose, I suppose then we should have a motion to appoint Member Crowley to the BZA.
So moved.
With the thanks, if I can make a friendly amendment to that, with the thanks and appreciation from the rest of the city planning commissioners.
You must have a talent here.
Right. That, that, yes, we, we, we.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Member Maynes.
I second.
Okay. Member Elmer and Member, it sounds like we already took the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, Commissioner Crowley will be appointed to the BZA for a one-year term.
With our thanks.
Any other things to come before the Planning Commission today? If not, announcements. The next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting will be Wednesday, August the 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. And the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission study session will be Thursday, August the 25th, 2022, at noon. No other business. I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
I saw a move.
Moved by Commissioner Wanika.
My second.
Seconded by Member Maynes. All in favor, say aye.